Okay, it's November 12th. This is our committee meeting. Ms. Kempf, will you please hold the line?
Mrs. Orza.
Present.
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Ms. Baller.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
Mrs. Raiver.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's move into discussion items. And we have with us from Norwood Middle School, Principal Jill Miller. Welcome, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, the evening, for President Andrew Ward and our interim superintendent, Mary Murray. Thank you. Thank you for doing this time to chat with you, talk with you a little bit about what's going on at Norwood Middle School. So I have to confess, the PowerPoint is as much for me as it is for you to keep me on point and on task so I can then kind of go on and on and on. So I was warned to have a nice PowerPoint and some bullets. So again, that's as much for me as it is for you. I do have a couple of handouts if you don't mind, if I can just throw a couple of these. So as you look at this picture of the middle school, it's a very, very iconic picture to me. And really, the middle school is like a hub. It's a hub of this community. It's a hub of this school district. There's just so many things that go on in this building, day in, day out. And there's not a single day that goes by that there's something going on in there between plays, sporting events, after-school activities. Of course, we have school in there. I think I was in there later one night last week and there was an orchestra group that was in there practicing for the play, I believe. And it just really impressed upon me just how important this building and this place means to the community. And I want you to know that it really means a lot to me. I'm blessed and just so happy to be at the head of this building as the principal. And so it means a lot to me, and I wanted to express my thanks to you. This is our vision statement for the middle school. It's printed in all of our handbooks. It goes home to parents and students electronically. What I wanted to impress upon you and bring your focus to were the building focus, things that we have going on in our building for this year, and they've certainly been going on for previous years, but very much so as we move into this year. I'm going to step back for just a moment. Anyone that's been in education for a while has heard about PBIS, and that's Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. And I don't want to bore anyone that's been in education forever. But it really is about an intervention model for students, interventions and supports for students who are struggling or who are not struggling in terms of how we set that up. And there's two sides of the KEN. There's this very beautiful diagram. If you look at it, you'll see it's a KEN. It's behavior and then it's academics. And so what I want to talk to you tonight about are those two sides of the KEN, are the academics and the behavior side of it. Attendance being the behavior side of it and academics, of course, because academics, it's important. It's certainly a big part of what we do day in and day out. The other building focus is the high improvement process that we're working in our teacher-based teams, which in many ways is very new to us at the middle school this year. New in the fact that we've not had that in a number of years. And that's something that we've built into the schedule for our teachers that I am hoping and believe will make big results for our students academically. Implementation of MAP and APEX programming. MAP is a benchmark assessment that we're using for math and language arts. And then APEX, you may know, or you perhaps do know, is an online program that we went to from E2020 that we have now moved to. And we're using that program during our comp studies time to provide some additional support for language arts and math. Implementation of common subject areas and assessments, so some of it informative. What that simply means, I mean, is that our teachers are on the same page. And some of the reasons that we're helping them get on the same page is through our scheduling, having common planning time, and a goal and a focus for us is to develop those common assessments in those classes, whether they be in course exams or they be a unit test. That is, that's a huge focus for us for this school year. And lastly, implementing Gear Up, the Gear Up is a program and organization that we're working through with the grants that helps provide many of college readiness and post-secondary opportunities for our students. So let me get on to the first piece, that's attendance. So I want to share with you some numbers. Our attendance percentage right now to that, 91.85 percent. Not bad. Not bad at all. I wish it was better. I want it to be better. I don't wish, I want it to be better. Not bad at all. Absence rate is 8.15 percent. And I want to go through those numbers because I want to explain them and want you to understand them. I know this seems very clear cut. 91.85 percent, that's great. That number, students that have excused and unexcused absences are counted against that. So this rate includes that. I just want you to be aware of it. And attendance is so important because if I can't get kids in the seat, I can't educate them. And I can't just educate the smart kids. And I can't just, my job, my duty is to educate every student in my building. And so that's why one of our key focuses is attendance. It's why I bring up these numbers. So you see something in our report card in terms of chronic absenteeism, which for 18, 19 school year was 34.2 percent. The reason I handed this out in regards to how still 410 is to help explain how the state makes that determination for chronic absenteeism. There's not a straight report I can run in our program now that tells you, well, here's your rate. So I have to use this detailed report to get to what today's absenteeism rate would be if we were scored today. It would be 23 percent. And so I show you that number because it's important, because I think it shows me and it shows us that we're doing things that I believe that are helping improve our attendance. And this is certainly something that we will continue to monitor on an ongoing basis. You might say, Joe, it's early in the year. You are correct. But we've found a way to actually track it. And so this will help give us some feedback to determine whether or not some of the things that we're doing for all of our students in terms of attendance is helping. And so what are those things? We have a homeroom attendance challenge, and I have a few pictures I'll show you because it's not all just speech and words and numbers. We have a homeroom attendance challenge that we run every week. Mr. Stacy and Ms. Goodfriend run these numbers for homeroom. So it's a challenge for the seventh and eighth grade level, the teachers and everybody's involved. Hey, come to school. And that means be to school and be to school on time, in the classroom. It's not just you're there. And you have to be on time, in the class. And so we run that challenge every week, and we award a seventh and eighth grade class. And I posted a couple of videos, some pictures, just to keep people aware of the things that we're doing. And the kids love it. They absolutely love it. So the students who win for that week get the attendance staff, and the previous winners have to march that staff down to that room and give it to the winning class. And we've, certainly, we've given donuts. We also do Warrior Bucks for those classes and then give them a special time when they can come to our Warrior store to collect an item. If any of you have ever been to Johnny Toys, like when you were kids, it's something like that. They get to use that dollar to gather in. But we also provide an opportunity for students that are doing well in terms of attendance individually. So any student that has perfect attendance for that time period, no tardies, no absences, their name goes into a hat. At the end of the week, we draw five to 10, and we give them a gift card. And they love it. They absolutely, whether it's five dollars to Gold Star or Skyline or what have you. I'll keep track of my time and get there. So we want to reward all students. So that's another way that we do that for individual students. And thanks for the assistance from Avenues for providing some funding for us to provide those awards to students. I mentioned that we do the student store, the Warrior Bucks, that teachers can give out certainly for kids and good behavior, academics. We open that store in the morning before school starts to encourage kids who have them to come to school on time. There are certain times when we do it at different times, but generally, the practice is to do it before school, and the idea is, hey, you have to use it, and you have to be here at school on time. So in addition to attendance, we are looking and working with our family services folks, Lynn Edwards, Amanda Buoff, the social worker in the high school and middle school now, Tower House, to provide intervention and services to small groups. So it's not just attendance. Students that may be struggling with anxiety, depression, that may have grieving, things of that going on. So we need on a monthly basis to review that information and data to help individual students and groups of students. So back to this, this gives me and us some feedback that what we are doing might be working. Yes, please.
Do you have one quick question before you move on to the slide? So I understand the numbers that I see up there on the slide.
Yes.
However, I think there's a big disconnect.
Yep.
And maybe I'm not the only one with this question, is to understand the difference of how you take an 8.15 absence rate, but then turn that into a 23 percent today chronic absenteeism rate.
You got it. I'll explain it.
Okay.
So the state, if you go to page, it's the third page on. The state is not very kind. I shouldn't say that. They don't look at numbers like this.
You can say it.
They don't say, oh, your attendance rate is 91.8 percent. That's awesome. They look at any student that meets the threshold of 10 percent or more absences from school, excused or non-excused. It does not matter. It all counts against us. Every bit of. So when I do that, I looked at the number of kids that met that threshold and just did part in the whole, and my percentage was 23 percent. So I had 60 kids that met at this point in time, that 10 percent threshold. And I have kids on there that are homeless. I have kids that have medical issues. And they're not all that way. I just wanted, so you have an understanding.
Right.
It all counts against us.
Right.
And so that kind of brings me to some of the challenges that we have, and I'm not making excuses. There are challenges that we have and that we face. Does that answer the question in terms of how they determine the...
So if I understand correctly.
Yes.
You're saying that the 8 percent of the kids that are absent from school account for 23 percent of the total absenteeism?
No, this number right here only tells you the average of the whole. So I might have 30 kids that have zero absences.
Right.
I have five kids that have 50 absences. The average of the absences per child is 8.15 percent. And so this number, it spreads it out where I can see these kids have 10 percent. And the state does it by hours, it's not by days.
Correct.
And so all that information is there and it's accurate. It says, these kids that are 10 percent or more. And I can just go down and I, 60 kids out of 268, which is my current number, hopefully then...
Or miss 10 percent or more.
That's correct.
Of the classroom class. Okay, I understand that.
No. And I want you to know, this is important, because when I inquire through SWOCA, they're like, well, we don't have a chronic absenteeism report. I'm like, well, why wouldn't every district and state want to know that? Because it's important. And again, I go back to, we want to get kids here.
Well, it's on our report card, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's on our report card. So this should help us.
I've got one question for you. So for a tardy, for example, since obviously it works in hours and not in days.
Yes.
The tardiness, so if a child is 15 minutes late, does it count as a quarter of an hour or does it count as a full hour if they're tardy at all, regardless of how tardy? If it's within a...
That's a great question.
Under an hour?
There's some nuances in terms of when I read, that's a great question. The day for us is 6.75 hours, I believe.
Right.
That's something I have to ask.
Because if the kid's five minutes late and it takes up an hour for them, that's going to be way more impactful than if it is only five minutes towards...
Well, it's not accurate reflection of what direction it is.
Exactly.
You are correct, and I don't know the answer to that.
I would love to know the answer.
That would be a good thing to know. Because I think this is something that we can certainly make an impact on. It's a way for us to track it where we didn't, I didn't necessarily determine or know how to do that before. And I think I'm excited about this when we ran this, because I'm like, all right, hey, I can show the board, maybe we're heading in the right direction. And we need more data points. We can't just take one time and say, oh, hey. So this is something that I can run very easily and see if we're making a difference for our students. And so I'm excited about that. And I mean, I think some of the things that we're doing are good for all of our kids. It's not just the kids who may be having difficulty. So, you know, I mean, kids love the Warrior Bucks. They absolutely love them.
One other for you.
Yeah.
So in this percentage, is there a breakdown that we can say that these are kids who have been suspended versus kids who actually need, I know they don't care about the excuse, but is there a breakdown from our standpoint for kids who are basically forced to not come to school because they've been suspended or expelled versus kids who are homesick or, you know, out for vacation or something like that?
Now, the absences in terms of excused and non-excused, they count against you no matter what.
Right. But for us to affect numbers.
Right, right.
How much of that are we affecting because of disciplinary issues? How can we address that to help that number?
I follow it. I follow it. There's certainly something we can look at.
Okay.
In the math, we do. I have one more slide. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So anyway, this is our student store, Warrior Store. We spend a lot of time with that. Again, kids love it. This is the staff. This is our newest gimmick, if you will. Somebody donated some bikes so kids can, if they choose, put their name in a raffle and then they raffle off. We'll raffle off the bike, if you will. They were donated treasure. So I don't know. So the next part of the KEN, the other piece, is the academic side of this. And I showed you the schedule, not that you have to study it or know it. We put a lot of time into this schedule over this summer in particular to provide a teacher's common plan, which they did not have before or haven't had in a while. I'm not saying they've never had it. But that has helped set up a lot of good things that are going on in the middle school that I want to explain, and I'll make it brief because I just need to make that report. So the schedule is important. So some of the things that we've done for this, going into this school year, and have done last year as well, and have just built from that. I say additional exposure and support in ELA and math through comp studies. Comp studies was an advisory bell time that we had within the schedule. So at the end of the 17, 18 year, my first school year, looking at our results on our statewide assessments, not pleased, not pleased at all, and our teachers weren't pleased. And so we had numbers that warranted, in my mind, we need to help, we need to find a way to help lots of kids, many of them. And so we created a committee of teachers, that summer, with the help of Christine Chesson, and looked at many programs, including APEX, E2020, and others. And it was decided through, with the teachers, that we would use APEX, which is also being used in the high school for original credit. We use that program to provide additional support and exposure to ELA and math during comp studies time for all of our students. And I have to say, we didn't necessarily get the results we were hoping to see as we moved into this year. I won't lie about that. I'll be frank. And so we've made some adjustments even within the APEX programming, but I'll just give you the highlights. Block scheduling in language arts. So after my first year, we went to block scheduling for language arts at the seventh grade level. For this year, we moved to block scheduling for ELA at the eighth grade level. As I went around the PEs and talked to other administrators in middle school, block scheduling was a norm in terms of providing some consistency in terms of language arts with reading and language arts for students. So that's a decision that I made in addition with some support from some staff in terms of moving the block scheduling into ELA. We added some honor courses in ELA and math this year in particular, as we looked at data from our elementars. When we looked at map scores and we looked at test scores, we had a lot of kids that do really well. They might not be gifted, but they do really well. And so we created some courses, they might be advanced or accelerated or on that bubble, to provide some more rigor for some of the students who need it, quite frankly, and will do well with it. So that's another area that we've provided some supports to students. We have labs for additional support for students that may need that, that's built into the schedule. Dream Box is used for math, and we have reading and writing labs. I mentioned the schedule and common content area planning time. So my language arts folks, my math, my science, my social studies, all of those teachers now have common planning time, which, if you ask any other schools, they'd probably be like, what, you didn't have that before? We didn't. We do now, and I think it helps for us with the impetus of what we have next with TBT. So we have teacher-based team meetings every two, twice a month, where they sit down and work this OIP process. You see this beautiful diagram up here. And it's a process, it really is a process, about looking at data, data inputs in terms of academic inputs, at where students are at, where do they struggle, and then providing research-based supports for students, testing again, how did it work? Did it not work? How can we tweak this? How can we change this? And the structure of the schedule really now provides for that, where we didn't have that before. And some of the teams are at beginning stages of this, and some of the teams are really good at it, and, you know, have them all in between. So we have some support coming from Hamlin County and the state support team in terms of doing this process. I believe that this process will help move the middle school even further. Our scores were not what they want, were what we wanted. And I don't think that's a true reflection of what our students can and can't do. We can do better. I know we can. So I very firmly and strongly believe in the schedule that we have now and what we're doing in the middle school to make things better for students. Again, I move down to benchmark assessments with maps. So as we move into next semester, we're going to further tweak, change how we use comp studies to create flexible grouping. So using results from math, I can further develop flexible groups for students who may need more assistance that are not getting it, if that makes sense to you. So having my language arts or my math folks take kids during comp studies who are on the bubble, if you will, who just need that extra push. And this isn't ignoring all the other kids. I want to be clear about that. Our kids that need help are still getting it. This is just working smarter, if you ask me, is the way I would explain it. Two more points and I'll leave you be. Some highlights, we've had strong results for our Algebra I students for the past two years, probably the past several years. I just want to highlight that. That's certainly a good thing for the middle school. We met that indicator. Gifted performance index, we met it last year. We missed it by a point this year. Gifted is very complicated, I'm sure Ms. Chesson will explain to you, extremely complicated indicator. But in terms of performance, moving kids that are gifted, moving them, we do that. We do that for them. We missed that indicator because of outputs in terms of the kids that are identified and are served or not served. It's a nuance, but it is certainly something I wanted to highlight. Science results for this year are the best we've had in the past seven years. So there are some things that I want to highlight to you that we're doing well, that we're also changing and adapting and getting better. And I just put the word upside there because I do see a lot of upside at the middle school with all the things that we're doing and attempting to do. And so with that, I, if you have any questions, feel free. I have some pictures that I'd love to show you, obviously. Amazing things do happen here. We also like to have fun. It's good to remember that this is middle school. They are middle school kids, so they need to have fun. We do have playtime. Student store, Mr. Wise, Raiver, you hear him before he's seen. He was a Xavier cheerleader as well. And our dance, and one of our recent rising stars, and this is Mr. Lutte, tossing a touchdown pass at lunch. Anyway, thank you so much for your time. If you have questions now or later, feel free.
I have a question, but I have to say, as a parent.
Yeah.
All of your work is extremely evident. I mean, I hear it in the conversations that come home. I see it in the work that's done. So I just want to encourage you to just keep doing what you're doing. I think we're going to see a change this year. Obviously, I haven't been a middle school parent before, but I've been just very impressed. I have a happy side of the middle school. We love it. You know, it's welcoming to the parents and the kids, and the curriculum seems to be just what he needs, and you see it. All of those bullet points, those would all be things that I would say, those are things that are done well. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's great to hear. Thank you.
Okay, well, moving on, this is point 02, which is signage in buildings after the construction. And we're going to guess what that's...
Well, actually, I just speak to it. It was, signage was left off on the middle school bid, so we are going to order it and the staff's going to install it. You know, I certainly noticed it when I was over there on the, at the RAP PD last Tuesday that Christine had organized. Since I didn't go there, I didn't know what rooms were, and there wasn't signage. So I know that has to be cleaned up. So we are working on that. And then I did want, and it is included in the elementary bids, Julie has told me, so there will be consistent signage, because as you walk around, it's different depending on what it was put up.
What would the signage, I mean, are we just, just certain areas or...
All the rooms.
All the room numbers?
Rooms. You'd be surprised, a lot of the rooms do not have appropriate numbers. And I was going to mention, maybe the bathrooms, we need appropriate signage, maybe the one-toilet bathrooms with more male or female kind of signage. Right now, we've got staff on some. It's just very inconsistent. And this way, we're kind of out ahead of all those issues. So we are working on that.
Point 03 is Margaret's Place.
Oh, that is me also.
I do have a quick question, since you were talking about the bathrooms. Are any of the staff restrooms that are like single-use, are any of those being designated as like multi-use bathrooms or family use facilities?
I would suggest we do that in the future.
Can we do that currently, while we're doing the signage?
Yes.
At least make sure there is a dedicated space for anyone that may need that space?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I was suggesting we update our signage.
Okay.
Before those issues arise.
Thank you.
Okay, Margaret's Place. I wanted to talk about this, and I do have a handout. In my previous life, Joe Torre, safe at home, came to town. I did not even know who Joe Torre was. My husband knew he was a famous baseball player, coach, et cetera, et cetera. And apparently, he grew up in a abusive home. And when he became wealthy as a baseball player and coach, he started a foundation, and mostly in New York, in LA, because that's where he had coached and played. But the Cincinnati connection is his wife is from Cincinnati. So they approached my previous district and said, would you be interested in us creating? And Margaret's Place is actually his mother's name. Would they hire a therapist, put it in a room that you don't have to have billable hours or fill out Medicare or Medicaid forms in order to use the therapist? And they raised a half a million dollars and their reviewees put a Margaret's Place in. So then I stayed on the advisory committee, so I've been on it the last couple of years. So they were talking about expanding to another school in the city. And of course, I said, well, I have Norwood. So if the board feels like this would be a valuable thing to do, I will continue working with them. I do think they will be able to raise the funds in general. They don't want to start, hire the therapists and start a Margaret's Place in a school unless they have about a half a million dollars raised. It did not take them very long the last time. It took them about a year and a half. So this would probably be, not next year, but probably the year after. I did take a look here, asking Mr. Miller and Mrs. Akers in the council, just to go over to reviewees, meet the therapist, see the setup, to see if it was something that they thought would work. And they thought it would be a valuable addition, even though really, there are some great services over there. over at high school, middle school. But for instance, if it's Tomford House, you do have, there have to be billable hours. So there's a lot of paperwork and intake that has to be done, and none of that would be needed for this, because the individuals there is already paid for, so you don't have to worry about billing. So that would be the advantage in any child who uses it for any reason who's having a baby.
It's children-focused, right? I just wasn't sure.
Oh, it's all children-focused. You're having a baby.
And a number of the family.
It's really child-focused at school. A safe place to go. So if you're interested, I will continue to raise my hand and say Norwood is interested, and we'll see if they can raise the money and bring it to the board. All right?
Three point zero four is updated field trip form.
Yes, we have updated. We are, there's just lots of field trips taking place, a lot of them outside of the city. So we have updated our forms. If they're in city, it's the first two pages, but if they're going out of the country, out of the state, I know that the Honor Choir is going to NKU. I think we're also, there's a group going to Branson, Missouri. And we just want to make sure that we have all kinds of information, who's going, cell phone numbers, all kinds of permissions. I will pass the packet around. So we just need to have a lot more paperwork to make sure we're using, we have due diligence, because it's awful if something were to happen, not to know how many and who was there, et cetera, et cetera. So it is, I do know that the advisors will have to spend a little extra time filling it out, but I think it's important information that we have to have.
So for this document here, would this become a document in our policy manual?
I would suggest we not do that, just because we continue to update and make changes. For instance, on there, it's got the airline that you're on. Well, now, if you're going on a cruise, you need the cruise line. So the minute you put it in policy, every single time we want to make a change in it, we'll have to bring it back to the board, and it'll take two months.
No, I understand that, but isn't our current field trip form?
No, not the form.
The form's not?
Not the form. So it's more about what to do as opposed to the actual form, because you know we're going to change something on there.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we don't have a duplicate document in our system.
Are we good to move on to three point zero five?
Mrs. Orsa, I think we left off construction update on this. So I know Mr. Peter wanted to speak.
I was just the physical.
So would now be a good time to slide that in, if that's okay, because it's usually a discussion item, and I know he has another student event later this evening.
I do actually, I'm actually working on works at the high school, so I'd like to stick over there if I can. I, the middle school, I think this might be the last month we mentioned Monarch. We are, the only two things I'm kind of waiting on is that the office upgrade that was done about two years ago, the HVAC system, it still needs to be tied into the front-end software system of the new setup that they did this year. And I think there's a little breakdown in communication between Monarch and their subcontractor on that, but I've been assured from Steve Tossi with SHP that they will get that figured out. So I'm glad that's on their end and ours. Another thing that I think is a little talking point with Monarch is that the, I believe they're going back to the signage. I think it's a different signage than what you brought up, but in the gyms, the fieldhouse gym, the boys' gym and the girls' gym, as well as the room in the upstairs, Room 300, we call it, which may be a cafeteria. There is branding done on the walls up there, and I believe there was a disagreement between Ron Hicks with SHP and Monarch. I think with the way I understand it, is Monarch believes that the branding that was, it has been done, but I think they run to the impression that the painting of the plywood wall was covered over a changeover, but the branding itself was not. So they're trying to argue that there should be more painted for the branding, and Ron insists 100%, because, oh no, I got the changeover that says it includes the yard line. So we'll have to kind of fight that. Moving over to the primary, we did do the inspections last week. Everything passed, so we did get the certificates of completion for the Sharpsburg Primary Building today. So we're ready to move in. There was a punch list taken care of late last week, I think it was actually Friday afternoon. I think there were about 60 items that were found, and yet more than 50 of them were just ceiling tiles that weren't quite cut perfectly. So they will be coming back through and fixing, taking care of a lot of ceiling tiles that come through and more delicately cut in place. So that being said, the major problem with that building were ceiling tiles. That's in my mind wonderful. Planes did start yesterday, moving some items from the elementary building. Well, we took some items from a storage shed into the primary building, which then opened up the storage shed for stuff from the elementary building to go into the storage shed. We also moved Katie Dykes. She had some stuff over there that went up to Norwood View, and I think there's a piano, a baby grand piano that was in the music room that we ended up taking over to the high school. So we were able to get a lot of things done yesterday that weren't going to hinder any teaching for this week. So we, and they got familiar with the building and the campus, and they intend to be back Thursday night, in which case we can move the preschool, because my understanding is there's no preschool on Friday. So they can move the preschool classrooms, so those teachers can set up this Friday. And then Friday night, Saturday and Sunday, they can continue to move the elementary building from that big building over to the small one at the modulars across the street. So ideally by Sunday, we are all moved over across the street.
And then Monday, the 18th, the teachers, that will be the day where they reset up their classroom, correct?
Correct.
So Sharpsburg will not have school on Monday, the 18th, the children. But the staff will be there studying up the rooms to be ready to go on Tuesday, the 19th.
Has that gone out to the parents yet, or will that go out?
Yes, it has gone out.
Okay.
But we should probably do another round or on Friday and tell people two or three times.
Yeah, people show up without their coffee on Monday morning.
I'm really impressed that it went off without hitch. I mean, really, it went so smoothly.
We needed that.
It's interesting, in the world of construction, there's never not a hitch. In Sharpsburg Primary, there really wasn't, but the hitch was the modulars.
Obviously.
There was, but there wasn't. So if things can go as smoothly as it did in Sharpsburg Primary, across the street, in the elementary, that would be wonderful. That would be a very, very good thing. We're always waiting for that curve ball, and I think that will be the curve ball. But they tell me they're ready for it, so they have some several times.
So it's still centured across the street?
Yes.
Fantastic. So I've been nothing but impressed that their work's unfolding as well, so.
I'm so excited to see that auditorium. The plans for that were just gorgeous. I can't wait.
Yeah.
All right. Go to the awards area on the right.
Thank you, Sean.
Three point zero five is the MOU in progress versus swim coach and indoor track and field. Which is my interest in people.
I believe it is the current track coach who is interested in doing indoor field and track. She was going to do it on a trial basis this year, but apparently it does have to be approved by the board as an additional support, an additional support. So that is why we were bringing it to you tonight. Also, when we looked at the contract, we discussed hiring an assistant swim coach, but the contract just has a varsity slash middle school coach, but we feel we could work with the teachers' union in order to hire an assistant swim coach for the rest of the season. We do have a teacher who is interested, and in fact, she was, had approached the AD to say, if we need any help. So we're going to ask her, yes, we need help, and would you mind filling in as an assistant for the season? So that's where we are.
Yeah, so indoor track and field, from what I understand, is a winter sport, which is why it has to be brought up now for approval, because otherwise they'll miss the start of that season.
And so what do they do? I mean, is it just like field events or?
They do some field events, and then, so instead of a 100-yard dash, it's like a 40 or 50-yard dash. And basically, think of the track above the boys' gym, but on a bigger scale. So when I was at UC, I had an opportunity to participate intermural for indoor track and field. And so, I mean, that's where a lot of the events probably that will be held will be at UC's facility down there. But then you could go up to Ohio State, they have the same thing, so.
That'd be great to be able to use that track again for practice, that aerial track.
Well, that, so the aerial track is not the exact size?
No, but it would still be a useful thing for, like, for practices and things, to be able to use that facility inside again would be neat.
Okay. So we went to four is the education committee. So four point zero one, our student field, I think this is student field trip. And that's select members of the West going to NKU. And it's like, this has already happened since the weekend, and I heard they did very well. Why are we just getting that?
I think it was a last-minute addition for competition, so sometimes we retroactively approve short field trips like that, especially when they're close. But yeah, I think the honors thing came up after some of the other competitions that they had competed in.
So the Honor Choir is something that they did last year, and that was the first time that they were invited to it. I know Adam Robinson is an alum for NKU, which is why Norwood gets to participate in this. I believe they're the only Ohio choir invited. The rest were Northern Kentucky choirs over there. But they did a fantastic job. There's some really high-level work that they do with the first year, so.
All right, the next item is the district calendar for next school year.
Yes, so pass me a copy of that out. It appeared on the September committee meeting, but did not make it to the September board meeting. So we just realized that, and we do need approval. We did make one change. When we looked at it with fresh eyes, we saw we had a December professional development, I believe it was December 11. We moved it to October earlier in the year to get more bang for your budget for the new duties, plus too close for the holidays. So we made that one small change. Everything else is the same as what you saw in September.
Is that that box date? I was curious about that. December 11?
Yes. Oh, we need to make that change. Thank you for mentioning that. Yes, that is, yes, that is the change.
And then four point zero three is the Grey Oaks Web. As we talked about, last time, we have to appoint by December. And so as I recall, I guess the only board member that's interested, correct?
As far as I know, as far as I know.
So that would be, and there was no interest in seeking outside representation either, so that would put Amber as the Grey Oaks Web.
Thank you for the vote of confidence. So we'll move that to an action item on next week's agenda.
All right, I'm invited to executive session. In accordance with ORC 121.22G1, the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a health employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual. In accordance with ORC 121.22G4, preparing for or conducting, reviewing negotiations or partnering sessions, the public employees concerned have compensation. And in accordance with ORC 121.22G81, the information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance that is to be provided or administered under the statute set forth in ORC 121.22G81, or involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project.
I would like to make a motion to enter into an executive session for the aforementioned items.
I'll second. Mrs. Orsa?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Baller?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber?
Yes.
All right, thank you. In addition to the non-regulable that was discussed in the executive session, there are a number of people activity contracts and elementary production coordinators who are going through. And also two coaches. So that concludes my recommendations.
And it's just like zero two is the NTA master agreement. Is there any discussion?
Be happy once this gets ratified and then come along.
As we've all had an opportunity to look over that and discuss, we're going to move on to policy committee.
Yeah, so for policy for this month, because we've gone a number of months without bringing anything before the board to approve, so we have a number of policies, the catch balance policy. It seems like all the time, we're always updating and reviewing tobacco policies. I think we do this three times a year. So those are on the list again as state law changes. So we have to change remedial instruction. There's going to be some changes to promotion and retention of students. We're going to have some changes. In fact, there's a couple of versions for everybody to review. Again, this is just the first reading, so if there's any one of those that you like better, please let me know, so that way we can do the first reading for the one that everybody likes the best. Again, it's the same way with tobacco use on district property. A lot of that has to do with the way that they're defined in eat cigarettes and vaping, right? And they're just bringing that language into, up to date into our policies. So if anybody feels a particular way of the language from one version to another, just let me know. That is it for policy.
So that'll get us into Buildings and Ground Committee. And our first item on the list has to do with construction and student placement. Julie, would you like to walk us through that?
I do. I have some documents for you to consider if you would take one and pass me around. I hope I have enough copies here. If not, you and I'll share, okay? So the first one I'm passing around is four different options that we have. And we're talking about the remaining elementary schools. So that would be View and Williams. And when we started this process at the middle school, we had construction happening while students were in the building, and we decided that was not best for construction or for students. And so then, this latest, Sharpsburg, we've had the modulars, and that has just been really difficult with timing and trying to get permits, and it's been labor-intensive and pretty expensive also. So Mary and I just kind of put our heads together, and we said, okay, let's spell this out in a format that we can clearly talk and communicate what our wishes are. And so I've put this Excel document together, and I would just like the board just to freely discuss it and give us guidance on what we think will be best for our next two projects.
So may I begin? If that's okay with everybody? So as I look at this document, so we are looking at four different options. So as, as I look at this document, so we are looking at four different options, ranging in a cost to our construction budget.
Yes.
Anywhere's from a hundred thousand dollars on the lower end to two point five million dollars on the higher end. I think it's important for everybody to keep in mind as, as we discuss these documents, or discuss these different options, that, you know, we don't have an unlimited bucket of money for this. And when the, when the levy was originally passed, it was intentionally passed to be short of all of the work that needed to be done. Because at that time we were hoping to be able to be frugal about what we wanted to do, so we could at the very end do some updating to the high school. And, you know, when we went into this with the middle school and we had the situation with the asbestos abatement, and, and from the original bid on that, I mean, that cut into that budget, you know, an extra one point two, one point three million dollars. If you look, if you look at the modular classroom for each elementary being remodeled, so this is doing the same thing that we did at Sharpsburg with the other two sites, that's going to cut into our remaining budget, an extra million dollars. So this isn't something that's going to be there for the long term. This is temporary classrooms that are going to go away, that's going to cost us a million dollars. It'll be a million dollars that we will never see.
Yes.
Right. Option C, which is the most expensive one, so this is the one where we would actually look at Allison, raise those buildings to the ground, and then put a modular farm that both of the other elementars would use.
At the same time.
Right.
It would shorten the construction, but it would greatly increase the cost.
But it, it would eat into that budget.
Yes.
Right, and so that's really going to limit what we can do with the high school.
Right.
Plus, if this late data have grave concerns that we could accomplish this before the start of the next year. There's, it's too short a time period to get.
I completely agree, I mean, we lived through the whole pack ban debacle, and that, that's a nightmare that I personally will never want to go through again.
Right.
Not to mention the chaos of the drop off and the picking up.
Right, so, so the fourth option, the fourth option is to keep the modulars at Sharpsburg, and then just have one of the other buildings just move into those modulars. I will tell you, I'm adamantly against this, this option. I do not want two buildings having to pick up and drop off kids.
At that corner.
At that corner. That's a nightmare.
It does seem dangerous.
Yeah, that is an absolute nightmare. So that, so that leaves us, that leaves us with option, in my mind, and anybody else can disagree with me, as the two most viable options are going to be either, either we do the modular classrooms at, at each elementary building as they come up for construction, which again, I've, I've got issues with because I've got PTSD. Right, or, or we be smart, we be smart about the use of our space and move the build, move one building into the newly renovated wing of the middle school. And that third floor space could be used as a captive cafeteria for those kids. That's, that's a cost of only a hundred thousand dollars to us, leaves a lot more money in the budget for finishing the construction and for stuff that we want to do at the high school. In, in my mind, option A is the best way to go, it makes the most efficient use of the space that we have. And the middle school's going to be there after it's all said and done. Right, it's not going to go away, so I think it's the most effective use of our dollars. But I'll leave it up to everybody else to kind of give their thoughts of how they feel, but I'm in favor of option A.
Our, our lunch staff has stated before that he could easily use a mobile unit to get food over there to, there, there is still elevator access, we have the brand new elevator right there. It was originally set up as a kitchen at one point, so it has its own little separate space. It was maintained as a teacher's lounge after that for many years, so it still has functioning water and electricity and hookups. So it would not be an impossibility to use that space as a functional cafeteria again. So we wouldn't even have to make any modifications to that top floor, which would be absolutely amazing. Those kids would be in their own wing for that entirety. We wouldn't have to get them to the high school or mess with anyone else's lunch schedule at all. And this money wouldn't be an additional cost, this would be an instead of cost from the initial plans, which would actually help get us back on target, remaining under budget. Cause even though we ate into a portion of that budget, we are still under budget, which is amazing that that is being accomplished so well. And I like the idea of keeping us that way and staying on that side.
Another thing I like about option one two, in addition to being less expensive is, you know, while we've, we struggled with the modulars and there's things that have been out of our control, you know, we have things that are out of our control and all of these other options, and I mean, even option D, now we're adding a shuttle service in, so that's just another thing that we can't control.
Right.
So that's another reason that I, I like option A.
And the costs that we do spend on option A are permanent improvements that will be used for years, it's not wasted money.
Right, and those classrooms are so nice. I, I would love to get those teachers in there so they could see the potential of those classrooms for elementary use. It would be fantastic for them to be able to use the space we already created and not have it just sit empty while we're doing the rest of the buildings.
I like how it says option A, so the elementary students will have separate entrances and exits. There are the separate playground cafeteria, I like that it calls them that as well, to keep those smaller kids separate.
And it'll also make the transition easier for our sixth grade students who will eventually be in the middle school again, like they used to be. Those kids will already be used to that building, used to that commute, and then we can integrate them quite more seamlessly, one at a time. It'll be a slow integration process instead of a, a shock in the water system. For our parents and for our students, it'll be, it'll be kind of nice to have that be a slow entrance back into the middle school.
So let's talk about that with option A. How that affects then the plan that was to move all of sixth grade up after this year. So I think that's something that, you know, the community of families needs to understand that if we go with option A, that changes what our original plan was.
Right.
But that would change it to the betterment of the construction plans moving forward in the schools.
That's correct.
That, that are being renovated, so let's just kind of flush that out a little bit.
That is correct, we could not move the sixth grade next year if we were moving an entire elementary school there. What might be wiser is after a year the construction's complete, move the K five children back and leave the sixth grade there, and then move the next school in. So it would really be a gradual movement of sixth graders, not all at once next year, if you were to choose this one.
So my school would send sixth grade at a time rather than having.
They would go with the, all K to six would go, then K to five would come back and the sixth grade would stay.
How would that affect the Sharpsburg students who are finished with renovation? Do they go up next year or do they stay?
I think we'd have to wait until the following year.
Yeah, this does Sharpsburg will join Williams and the twenty one twenty two.
Yes, because there wouldn't be room, Norwood View is larger, and I, so our recommendation would be that should be the school that goes first.
So Norwood View would, would send their entire building into that wing.
K to six, that's great.
We would completely do the renovation process to View, have that whole entire space available to the, to the construction site. We'd not have to worry about any modular issues. Right, but once that is done, K through five would go back to View.
And sixth grade would stay.
Sixth grade would stay, you would have Williams come over, K through six, and then you would have Sharpsburg's sixth grade.
Also come.
The year after.
Because Williams has fewer students than Sharps, so there would be space that year, but not the first year. Because Norwood View is larger.
So Sharpsburg's sixth grade would come the same, the same year as Williams?
Yeah.
Okay.
And still be isolated, would they still, how would you still isolate that elementary wing? Where by that time is all of sixth grade?
At that time, I think we're looking at sixth grade being incorporated into the middle school.
Cause that year they'll all three be there.
They'd be there. But the K to five would definitely still be separated that second year.
And if we reevaluate at some point, if our numbers change at all or anything like that, we can always, you know, hold back Sharpsburg one more session if we need those extra classrooms. We can make that decision in a couple of years based on enrollment at that time. But the idea for numbers now is that Sharpsburg and Williams are small enough to come up together.
Yes.
If that were to change, we can always, just for sixth grade, yes. Then if that were to change, we can always make arrangements.
Yes.
Okay.
So this would be a two-year process.
And now the preschool floors.
We're not moving preschool.
Right.
I believe preschool is going.
Preschool, Williams preschool would go to Norwood View. And then.
During construction?
During the construction.
Of Williams.
Of the other way.
Of Williams, okay.
Yeah, we're not having, we're not moving preschool, there's just too many permits and just all kinds of issues involved in preschool.
That's just a good thing to let our parents know, preschool is not going to be moving, this will be K through six.
Six, and Shannon, so where would the preschool go?
So when Williams is under construction, the preschool at Williams would move to Norwood View. And then once construction is finished here, we would open a classroom at Norwood View for preschool, and then the preschool would move back to Williams.
So out of curiosity, for just the sheer traffic of getting students that are on the Williams side of town up to View, would there be space at the primary building for a preschool classroom for those parents at Williams to come up the street? Cause it would be a lot closer for them to get through.
So we have that same issue now that we do, because we don't have a preschool at Norwood View, the View parents are having to come all the way down to Williams or Sharpsburg.
Right.
If they're currently at Williams, when we move it to View, if they would say, hey, can I go to Sharpsburg instead, it's closer, we would be able to honor that.
Okay. So that'll be a, a choice for parents, okay, great.
I think we'll find a lot, we'll have more students once we open a classroom in Norwood View.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to having that space up there for them, it'd be great.
And the, the start times and end times would be staggered for elementary and middle school parents?
Definitely, we think with the traffic flow, we plan if, in the next two weeks that we will have to get with the principals of these buildings and make sure that we can stay at the times, have the separate gym, separate cafeterias, separate bathrooms, just an entire separate wing, playground and all of that that would be separate. So we're going to have to start planning that in anticipation if, for the board, if you were to choose option A.
Now, I would say, well, obviously it's preferred to have separate start times. I think that parents might struggle with bringing their middle school student and then turning around and going home to get their elementary school student and bring them right back to the same building.
Well, not, not necessarily, because we, like with, if they get there early enough, for instance, obviously the, the middle school students have their ability to go into the store, so there are spaces that are going to be available to them earlier in the day. And especially for bad weather, if we offer that same type of, of thing for our elementary students, we could maybe create an elementary store or open up the gym space or something for them to be able.
Though that they're very firm when the doors open.
They, especially this year, I feel like.
Both had their middle school and at the elementary schools, doors open at middle school, let's say at seven thirty, seven thirty-five, whatever it is, there's no earlier time for that, they're really out, you know, if you get there earlier outside.
We're, we're going to have, we're going to have, we're going to have to look at that, because we can't have elementary children outside.
But that would just be good to plan with that.
Right, they need to consider that, because now that we offer breakfast to everyone, maybe we could have an option of children. Right now, I think they do it in the classroom, but maybe they could even the cafeteria, so you can drop them off twenty minutes.
Up until this year.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up, it's like a before school.
But that's what I was saying, we should have an option for them.
We have before school programming that's available, so if this is the direction that the board is moving, then just more brainstorming will occur around that concept.
Yeah, if parents have to bring in their elementary student and their middle school student at the same time, their middle school are obviously will be going upstairs into class. We have to have something for that elementary school kid. So having the gym space open or having the cafeteria open for a, a bigger breakfast would be a really good option.
So let's go, we are meeting with the principals tomorrow morning, so we will discuss this with them and see what kind of ideas and issues they come up with. So we'll have a, a plan put together for the next board meeting.
Well, would everyone mind just kind of saying where your head is and what we would like, you know, what, what option we're leaning towards? I mean, I, I think I hear it clearly, but if we could just, just verbalize it, I think that would, that would be helpful as you go in to talk to your principals and, you know, you know, we all very clearly on for option A, which is, okay.
I think that's a very creative solution that solves many problems and saves some money.
Yep.
I agree.
No modulars.
And no modulars.
No modulars.
And no circles.
And it really is a beautiful wing.
Yeah, it's a great space and it would be a shame to leave it sit while we're doing all this work to create new classrooms.
I really do like to, like, just keeping, keeping the community, keeping the kids together. You know, even in the modulars, there's still some kind of separation, it still feels like kind of like they're removed. So I like the idea that it's still a cohesive school feel, just in a different building. I think that, I hope that that will be appealing to parents.
And I'm really impressed with the staff and the parents at Sharpsburg for their patience through this and for being the, the first trailblazers for this experience so that we can learn from it and make changes that will help the future elementary schools have a smoother pathway.
Yeah, well, we learned lessons from the middle school.
Yes.
We learned lessons from Sharpsburg, so.
Yep.
Will we learn lessons from this?
I actually do, I have a question as a certification.
So will the sixth grade at View then still be a part of View, or will it be part of the middle school?
Well, no, because, so the year, the year that they're there by themselves, I think they'll be part of the elementary school.
Okay, so they will still remain like part of View?
Part of View, but I think the following year, when you bring the other two sixth grade up.
They'll be part of the middle.
That's what we need to get that transition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one thing to note too, we had mentioned it briefly before, but the, because of the parking lot that's right there, the band uses it as a practice space. We will have to configure the band space to practice behind the fieldhouse, they've used, they've used that grass space before. But we'll have to make sure that that parking is then available to staff to cover both buildings. You know, parents for drop off situations, things like that. So for that, just the band season, they can probably use it after school hours, but if they have anything marked off, so folks can't park there during the day, we'll have to move that space to the grass area.
We'll need the parking.
Yeah.
That is something that we really didn't mention, but just having the children and the staff completely away from the construction site is going to be nice.
Yes.
With parking and, and everything.
It feels safer.
Yes.
Well, they're in a controlled building, the doors have been updated, the safety systems have been updated, all the door locks have been updated.
I'm just thinking, you know, going through, and I know that the teachers at Sharpsburg have just been, just really phenomenal with the whole move, but when I went in to visit the modulars when they had their open house, I mean, they all have this sense of, you know, I have it, you know, it looks great, but you know, and we're making do, and I've done everything that I need, but knowing that they really didn't have everything that they need, so hopefully this will kind of really make them feel like more they have, the teachers have access to everything that they need, rather than just being in a transitional, smaller space with no closets or.
I'm glad they weren't in the long, they'll be back next week into a real classroom, that's amazing.
You know, that's a good point, because they could actually, their supplies could be moved over the summer, so they can be in there in early August setting up their rooms, as opposed to after the school year starts, trying to deal with it.
No more staff moves during the year.
Yeah.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of pluses to it.
Is there any way that we could kind of do a mock classroom setup so we could allow the community to see what an elementary class could potentially look like at the middle school?
Oh, that's a very good idea, certainly, yes.
We have a partnership with the, with the company that did all the, the wood. We have a partnership with the, uh, with the company that did all the, the wood desks and blocks and, and school supplies. I think we might be able to reach out to them to see if they would help us stage a classroom.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
You should write, it would help people visualize what it would look like.
All right, I'm eight point zero two, facility usage. So this, um, is another request that was in the past for this last Friday, November eighth. Um, we had a church request to use Northwood, North Norwood's playground for overflow parking for a funeral service if needed. So we don't, um, we don't necessarily know if they needed it or not, but I've heard that we had, um, some of our employees check on that and everything's okay, so.
So do we, do we really need to approve this then? I mean, is this, is this something that really needs to, I mean, if it already happened?
Um, our policy says that the board approves facility usage. So there are going to be instances in emergency or something where we have to do things retroactively.
Yeah, but doesn't our policy also state that the superintendent has the ability to make a judgment call?
I, I'm not sure. I'll have to check on that.
I, I think it does.
Yeah, for something like this, I mean, I wouldn't care if somebody needed a lot for a funeral and I would be, I would totally support Mary saying yes. Please use this. Yeah, please use it, you know, with our sympathies.
We have to have a paper trail just to say, yeah, that was okay, but I mean, but what happens if for whatever reason, you know, three of us said, no, we don't want them to use that space for that purpose?
That's true.
And it already happened.
Well, you know, we can certainly modify the policy.
But I, I think the policy, I think the policy is already written in a way that the superintendent does have some latitude to say.
And then instead of us approving it, it would just be more of a, hey, you guys, this emergency popped up. I went ahead and granted use of this facility.
No, but then at what point do you say, you go ahead and give something if they don't submit the paperwork in time? You know, and where do you draw mine?
Well, you don't know when somebody's necessarily going to pass away.
I mean, that's a unique situation.
Right.
For all other things, I mean, what if someone wanted to use your stadium?
You would prefer they have the paperwork done.
Well, we also prefer that they do it, had enough time to give us an opportunity to put it on the agenda and actually vote on it. I mean, I understand the unique situation here, but I'm pretty sure, and you know, we're gonna check on this before next week, but I think the language in our policy allows, allows that to happen. And if that does, I mean, I'm okay with taking this off the agenda.
Yes.
All right, this is Camp House at Showtime.
Take a drink, stretch. It'll take me a minute to get set up. My computer over there.
Oh, good.
Hopefully it just, it'll just be great.
You're gonna start with the CFA report.
Ma'am, I'm just gonna do the forecast and then I'll get back to my desk and or back to my spot to do that.
But is the, is the five-year forecast in an attachment on our agenda?
It is.
Oh, I see it. It's the fourth.
It's not the, um, the presentation is not attached, but the forecast is. Okay, so whenever the five-year forecast, um, as you know, this five-year forecast is approved by the board twice a year. In the past, it's been in October and in May. It was changed in the biennial budget so that now it is November and May, so that we can reflect accurately this, um, the status of any levies that might have passed in November. So, uh, this will affect us next year. We're reviewing the forecast, um, and there are three things that I want you to take away from today's discussion. We're spending what we bring in every year to forecast after the current year. We have cuts to staffing anticipated in the forecast. And a substitute levy is planned for November of 2020 to replace our expiring emergency levy. Now, the substitute levy, um, I'd like to be able to call it a renewal levy because it's the same amount of money, but the structure of a substitute levy is such that we are not allowed to call it a renewal levy, even though it's the same amount of money.
So this will not raise taxes in any way for the public if they renew this levy?
That's correct. It's the same amount of money. Remember the forecast just estimates the general fund. All other funds are considered self-sufficient or they should be unsufficient. At any time, please ask questions as we go through this. This is a simplified income and expense statement. And I really like it because the forecast can be a little intimidating. There's a lot of numbers on the forecast. So this document starts off with a beginning balance. It adds in revenues. It subtracts, um, expenditures for the year, comes up with an ending balance. Now you will see also in there is a proposed renewed replacement levy that has money in it in fiscal year twenty-two.
So, yeah. This is a very scary document for me.
It is.
And I just want to make sure that everybody who, who's looking at this sees that without the renewal levy, without the renewal levy, um, we are gonna be out of money very quickly.
So right here above the black line, you see the one point seven million there? That's the substitute levy proposed in there. So if that passes, which, you know, we certainly hope it does, we're spending into our carryover one point one million in 2022, two million in 2023. If it doesn't pass, this is where we're at down here. So actually in fiscal year twenty-three, we'll have a cash balance of five hundred thousand dollars if the levy doesn't pass and we don't make any changes, um, to what we have planned on, on the expenditure side.
And, and this, this document includes some current stuff, some standard reductions.
And so just so we're clear for the public's perspective, anything that we are currently doing with the buildings in regard to construction and money there cannot be used in any way to apply this fiscal forecast.
Absolutely.
So that money is completely dedicated, already used and is in process of being used for construction and must remain there. We cannot take that apart to use for our forecasting.
Even, even more, it's very, very regulated. Money that comes in in taxes is very regulated. That goes into a separate fund that pays our debt, um, for the money that we borrowed to, to renovate our building. So I mean, that just, that just gives me the.
You can't use that for operations.
Even think about that, we can't.
I just don't want the public to think, oh, well, we just approved something for the schools. Where is it going? What's it being used for? Why can't they just use some of that? I want that to make, make sure that the folks at home who, who will hopefully support this continuing renewal, understand that the monies that they voted for previously is a completely separate topic and we cannot touch it
That's correct.
for this use.
That's correct. The, the money that they cast before was a bond levy specifically to renovate buildings. What we're asking for in our substitute levy when we operate, it's instructional. It's to keep staffing. It's to provide all the things that we do with our general fund money. So this is a, um, this bar graph just shows you our cash balance for the general fund. And you'll see that we started out pretty low in fiscal year thirteen. You even see around me in a way.
No, it's, it's fine.
So then the dark blue is actual. So you'll see we've built our cash balance as we've gone along because, um, the school districts, the money, when we pass a levy, the money, um, it can, it can get used up pretty fast, but we've been frugal with the money. We've kept it. We've, we've built our cash balance. We, we're addressing a cash balance policy to make sure that we have that protection built in of ninety days cash. And, um, you'll see then last year we dropped a little bit. Next, or this year, um, we'll, we'll be pretty good. But then you'll see it falls off pretty drastically as we start spending into our carryover each year. I always like to put this graph in there just to show the consistency of it. So this document just compares the May forecast to, uh, the current November forecast for revenues. And you'll see that they're very close. Uh, real estate taxes is down just a little bit. Public utility taxes are about the same. Unrestricted grants and aid, that's our state funding. And you'll probably remember in May, I was still expecting some guarantee reductions. We are guaranteed, district paid on a guarantee. And I thought that the state would come through and say, you know, we're gonna reduce the guarantee by five percent. They didn't. Instead, they kept us, um, guaranteed almost at the same amount that we received last year. So that popped our amount off for this year a little bit, about three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the last one, one point six, all other operating revenues, that increased quite a bit. But likely to keep in mind, the biggest portion of all of our operating revenues is our TIF money that comes in. And you'll remember that we received a TIF payment this year of almost six hundred thousand dollars that should have been received last year. It was for last year's revenue. So, um, that is not continuing. We won't get that double payment again next year. This pie chart, I think, is always very helpful because I know there's a lot of people that think and maybe question, where do we get our money from? And so this just tries to break it out. Real estate taxes is at forty-nine percent. Again, that unrestricted, uh, aid, that state funding at twenty-four percent. All of the revenue is at fourteen percent. Um, and the other, the other areas are pretty small.
So the state only funds our district and allow them twenty-four percent?
They expect us to, they expect us to have a little share of seventy-six percent.
And that's a surprisingly low number of states of court. There was a time when the state provided the majority of the funding for all school districts. It's shocking how it's decreased over time.
Right. And we'll talk about this more because, you know, the state, the state funding comes in in several different areas. We see it come in unrestricted. We see it come in restricted. And then we see it in property tax applications. That's money that comes from the state. And you'll see that that has just dropped a lot when we talk about that. So this is real estate revenues. You'll see the dark blue lines are actual, the light blue lines are what I am estimating that will come in. And then that kind of aqua color is, is our, our substitute levy. So, um, just to be clear, I'm not going to count that we get it until we know that we pass the levy. Um, and then we'll plug it into the forecast. I'll be happy to plug it into the forecast once it passes. So another thing on this, there are, there is some variations from one year to the next in the property taxes, and that's not growth and loss as much as it is settlements. We do have a high commercial property, um, base year. And a lot of times with commercial properties, you'll see settlements or large payments that kind of makes you go up one year and then you see a drop the next year. I'd like to talk about our property values also. The, the auditor, um, the Hamilton County auditor assigns property values for all the homes and businesses in Norwood as it does, uh, for all the districts in Hamilton County. And we show fifty-four percent residential population, fifty-four percent of our wealth is residential. And then only forty-one percent is class two, which is commercial and industrial. And we all know that that is not, that just doesn't seem right because we do have a large commercial, uh, statement, uh, property here. And that's because of our TIF properties. When things are tipped and abated, they actually remove the value of that property from our valuation. So that is why this just seems kind of, seems kind of wrong.
Is there any way to forecast the change in that tip or abatement structure? So if you know properties are tipped or abated for a number of years, is there any way to know when those things would come off and they would show up in the class B or class two category?
That's actually a very good point because it's, it's very important for the treasurer to know when those are coming back on because we need to watch and make sure that that property comes back on as new construction.
As value, as, as property value.
So that we get that revenue. Because if it doesn't come on as new construction, we get no revenue on it.
Right.
So it is, it's, it's very complicated and that's what makes Norwood very interesting is because we do have several TIF properties. Um, and of course they are all different, none of them are the same, and it does take a lot of work to, um, to keep them all straight. This is our state revenue. And so this is just the actual state revenue. So the state says, okay, we're gonna give you twenty-five hundred dollars per child for regular core funding. And then there's a couple other things that we give money for, like economic disadvantage and, um, special education. We get a little bit of money for transportation. But when you break it down on a per-student basis, it's, it's still like forty-five hundred, five thousand dollars a student for a whole year to educate them. And you'll see that when you look at that dark blue line and you know that that's actual what we've received as a district in total, there's just not a lot of variation there. Two, two biennial, bienniums ago, in sixteen and seventeen, we saw a small increase. And then it just dropped right back down again. And I'm estimating in the lighter blue lines that it stays stable also.
But that could change in the next biennial budget.
It absolutely could say.
Right.
It could change. And, and the way I'm estimating it is by what's current law. When a law changes, I'll have to recalculate it. And another thing to think about is that if we do have a recession, um, then we could see cuts to those guarantees which will affect us since we're a guaranteed district.
And, and just so that I understand correctly, so being a guaranteed district means that the state's funding us based on a certain number of membership or a certain number of students?
Right. We, at, at one time, we were, um, years ago, we were, we were, our, our funding was received based on how many students we had. And since then, we've just been guaranteed year after year after year to get the same amount because we have seen decline in enrollment. So we're still getting what we got three or four or five, six years ago, whatever. I think this is the graph that's really eye-opening. This is our tax allocation reductions. So the state gives us money for TPP allocations. They have, years and years ago, we used to get something called TPP tax, which was a tax on equipment and inventory for businesses. And that was years ago, but that tax went away. At that time, the state started giving, um, districts that were affected by this, what was called TPP allocations. And you'll see then fiscal year thirteen, we received two point two million dollars. In fiscal year thirteen, it dropped. This year, we're gonna get about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Next year, we're gonna get about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the following year, we'll get fifty and then it's gone. So that's just a huge reduction. And this is the number one thing that is making our levy so important. This is why it's so vital that we pass a substitute levy because of these reductions.
So just so everybody understands is the way that our budget is structured, you know, um, seven years ago, you know, that was about ten percent of our budget. That funding was ten percent of our budget. And, and another two years from now, it's, it's not gonna be there at all. And so even though the state took that funding away from us, thank you Governor Kasich for shoring up your rainy day fund. So now we're left, you know, holding the bag, trying to figure out, so the state says, you know, we're taking this away, but you still have to figure out how to balance your budget. And so that's why you see so many levies from school districts on the balance every year. It's directly because of this. And this is why this is so important for our next levy renewal cycle. It's because of this. I mean, we have to figure out a way how to account for that loss.
Would this new, uh, I guess, sub, substitute levy would guarantee us funds for the next ten years?
I would like to have it as a permanent.
As a permanent.
Permanent levy. Now I think it's also very important to, to note that we're asking for a substitute levy to keep us at the same amount of funding from our taxpayers, but yet we're. levy to keep us at the same amount of funding from our taxpayers, but yet we're looking right here at losses.
Right.
That we're seeing in revenue. And we're committed to balancing our budget some way to, to recover from those reductions. We're still only asking for the same amount from our taxpayers that we got ten years ago.
So in my mind's eye, as, as I sit here and I listen to this presentation, this is why economic development for a city is so important. Because, you know, that commercial growth development is really what's going to bring additional revenue into the school system. Right? You, you don't want to, you don't want to shore that burden on the average homeowner.
Right.
Right? But it's the commercial property that's really going to add the high value that's going to bring that in. So, you know, it's why it's so critical to have a great master plan and a good economic development plan within the city.
And to monitor what we currently have too.
Absolutely.
This is our other revenues, um, category. And like I said before, the largest source of other revenue is our payment of taxes or what we often call TIF money. In fiscal year nineteen, the district received one point seven million in TIF payments from area business taxpayers. After challenging the value of some of these properties, we expect three million in annual TIF payments this year. But like I said before, it is important to note that five hundred and eighty-seven thousand of this year's revenue was due last year, but it didn't come till this year. So if you look at that first white blue line and take it down about half to the dark blue line right in front of it, that's going to put us right about where we should have been if we received it last year. So you're not seeing a lot of variation in this, um, once you take out those few settlements. And, and not a lot of growth here either. It's, it's kind of just stable.
Right. But that, that relies on economic development.
It does. Because all I can forecast is what's currently going on. But as we see things happening and, and make improvements, then I start to plug it in the forecast. Same as we did before, this is comparison of the current November forecast to May. And this is just for the expenditure side. And you'll see it's very close. Personnel services, which is salaries, is a little higher because we didn't see attrition that we thought we would see. Not as much anyway. The next line item is retirement insurance benefits went up just a little bit. Purchase services went up, went up a little bit. But everything else was stable. We did, we did see a little bit in supplies and materials, about fifty thousand. We've seen some increase in stock work costs as we become more tech, tech-based. And then we, we spent about twenty-five thousand dollars in setting up our STEM classroom. So, um, those were very worthwhile.
You know, going back to that last slide, I, I just want to thank the administration for working so hard to keep especially the insurance benefits as flat as possible. I, I know, I mean, you know, you just hear stories of how insurance costs just go up twenty, thirty percent, forty percent in some, in some instances. And to have something like that, you know, from one year to the next, to be extremely flat, I mean, it's, you know, thank you for the work that you do in order to maintain those costs as, as low as possible.
Yeah. We do have a very active consourcing that's devoted to keeping the cost down for school districts and preserving the benefits. Same thing, uh, breakdown of our expenditures. You'll see our salaries are at fifty percent of our total general fund budget and benefits are at eighteen. That puts us at about seventy-four percent personnel costs. And it's always been the rule of thumb, when you hit about eighty percent, that you're, you're kind of pushing the envelope a little bit there. So you can see why we're filming the budget. It's just another indication. This is just salaries only and, um, you'll see that it's considered, that it's just going to rise a little bit. The increases are based on union agreements have settled. Otherwise, the estimates are based on history. Staff reductions are.
Are included.
Are included in this forecast. We have, um, I believe it's seven next year, uh, six in the following years of the forecast. So.
And that, that could include anticipated attrition numbers?
Yes. That, that is how, that's based on the forecast is on attrition. That's what we are seeing. That as people leave us, we'll try not to replace all of the, um, staff members that leave. Employee benefits, uh, you'll see next year is flatlined again. Dark blue is actual and the light blue is estimated. You'll see it's kind of flat as you, as you mentioned, we're trying to keep those employee costs for benefits down for health insurance mainly is the big, is the, is expensive one. And I also would like to note that all of our, our, all of our employees currently pay at least twenty percent of the premium for health insurance. And, um, that's pretty high for industry standards for, for a school district. Here's the actual cost of our health dental life. So for this year, we're at two million, two thousand and three hundred dollars for medical, two hundred and thirty thousand for dental and just, uh, under fifteen thousand for life insurance. And you'll see that while I do have increases in there for health insurance, they're not extremely high. So we do see a bad year. I'll have to read just the forecast. Purchase services cost, um, this is just a wild card. This one is just really hard to predict. And, um, so each, it seems to be like each November I bump it up a little bit and then just kind of watch it as we go through the year and then May kind of back up a bit. So I'm hoping that happens because again, this year, I'm really hoping that we can save a couple hundred thousand dollars in this area.
So just so that everybody understands, for purchase services, so these are services for, um, students that need special, special needs or special services. So if they need occupational therapy or if they need, you know, um, to go to a program outside of the district.
Right.
So those are things that we're covering. So, you know, what's scary about this is this is a really unknown budget item because you don't know who's going to walk in to the door of your district that year and what they may or may not require. So this is extremely difficult to forecast.
So, um, I actually have some numbers on that. While purchase services is twenty-two percent of our total budget, um, we'd like to keep in mind that almost thirty-eight percent of that purchase service budget is cost related to educating special education students that cannot be educated in our building. So it's thirty-eight percent of the twenty-two percent. Although the twenty percent of purchase services is on school choice. So it's students that are going to community schools, they're accepting a voucher program or scholarship program or Go Brown Little Town. So that's fifty-eight percent of our purchase services that we really, really have our time controlling those costs because of mandates from the state that says you will spend it this way. That's all I have. Do we have any questions? Another forecast. Catherine Hall.
It's to the end of the month, correct?
It is, yes. The board will prove it hopefully next week and, um, submit it to ODE right afterwards.
For the rest of finance, we have finance reports attached for your review and your approval next week. The monthly report is there. See if I can get back to my agenda here. As well as a Monarch Construction Change Order spreadsheet. We don't have a change order update for century. Eight point oh two, permanent appropriation resolution and four twelve certificate, which is just our budget for the current year. I will update that also for next week. We'll have a, an additional one on there. Eight point oh three is a minute certificate, which is our expected revenues for the current year.
Are you under nine?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I am the wrong one.
I just want to make sure I'm following.
Yes. We're, those were all nines, not eights.
I, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Nine point oh four, the five-year forecast and assumptions. Those attachments are out there. The assumptions are a very important part of the forecast, so I hope you'll have time to read over it. It's, it's, um, words and pictures, unlike the forecast, which is just a bunch of numbers. But it tells you where I came up with the numbers, so it's, um, pretty interesting. Nine point oh five.
That document's on, is going to be on our website.
It will.
Afterwards, if anybody wanted to grab that, take a look at it.
It will. It is also available on ODE's website after I get it submitted. Nine point oh five is school safety grant. Nine point oh six, resolution giving the authority to file a modified tax budget for the 2021 school year. Um, this is per Hamilton County Auditor's request. Nine point oh seven is PACVAN change order. This is for electrical services and it's directly due to the fact that we had to remodel or we had to change the layout of those modulars. And so they had to redo the electrical work. Nine point oh eight is a donation. There's a very nice donation on there from Norwood Scholarship Foundation to pay for our high school's AP testing.
Kind of fantastic.
It is.
Yes.
That is very nice. And then a hundred dollars from the creamy whip by Sharpsburg. Nine point oh nine, the transfer of abandoned funds. The state auditor's office is very clear about what is an abandoned fund and what do you do with an abandoned fund? It has to be transferred to the general fund. But because these amounts of money are so large, um, for the class of sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, we've reached out to the principal and she's going to coordinate with those classes and try to earmark some of those funds so that they can buy something that we can say was dedicated by those classes.
So I think this is important that, you know, if people are, are watching this or listening to this. So, so the class of 2016 has available seventeen thousand dollars to earmark for, for something.
Mm-hmm.
And, and because they've not identified anything to buy, that's going to become an abandoned fund.
Yeah.
Right? And, and again, the same thing with the class of 2017, you know, that's another fifty-nine hundred dollars. And then the class of 2018, that's fifty-five, fifty-six hundred dollars.
Yes.
So if anybody knows the class president for the class of 2016, 2017, 2018, that person needs to get in contact with us as quickly as possible so we can figure out, I mean, I don't want these funds to become abandoned.
Right.
I want them to, to spend that money.
Yes.
You can do a lot of great things with that.
Absolutely.
We had a meeting during the course of the convention for, um, the Ohio Black Caucus and that I'm a part of, and they had the same question come up. They had about three thousand dollars in abandoned funds. Um, so they voted to move those funds into their sponsored scholarship, which is the Leo Lucas Scholarship Foundation. Um, it would be really neat idea if we had the option of a scholarship foundation that's just the alumni scholarship fund or, you know, something specifically for classes with remaining monies that if they don't make a decision for these types of funds, that we could put it directly into a scholarship specifically, um, for students to use. Because if it's a scholarship, then those monies don't get transferred into the state general fund. They get held for specific use by students for those scholarships. So that could be an option, um, that we could establish something specifically for classes that they're like, even if we do a dedication bench or plant a tree and we still have money left over, but we don't know what to do with it, it could just funnel every penny right back into the students, uh, at Norwood.
That's a decision that the class needs to make and, and that would be an option.
I'm saying if we establish an option so they could say, if we have money left, it can then go to this place. And we could have the place for them.
But I, I don't know, I don't know if we can, because that's kind of like asking a leading question. Right? And I don't know if we're technically allowed to say, we have this spot available to you and we're, we want to make it easy for you to, to move this. But I don't know if legally, if that is allowed.
It's, it would just be an open account that they could choose to leave funds that would be going elsewhere, outside of Norwood, to be kept in Norwood.
I, I agree. I think it's a great idea.
I know that the Black Caucus did it specifically and that that was something that did not have any type of legal ramification in that way. It just was a way for them to make sure that the funds were allocated in a way that affected Black Caucus in a positive manner directly, rather than going into the state general fund. I'm just putting it out there as a possibility that we could offer something similar for our student classes if they had leftover monies, to put it towards a scholarship foundation.
Yeah.
So that they could at least be viable for students from Norwood.
I just want those classes to buy something with that money. Use, use that money in, in whatever way that they want to use it. I, I think your idea's great. I, I just, I don't want to see those funds go abandoned.
No. The, and, and what will happen in the future, and I've, I've talked to the people in my office, that, you know, by May tenth, if we've not heard from the class president on what they want to do with the funds that are left over in their account, we will be reaching out to them. So I don't see this happening again. This is cleaning up old funds.
Yeah.
But another thing that they can do is they can always just leave it to the next class. If they don't have an idea of what to do with it, then the next class doesn't have to work as hard on the fundraising because they have a couple thousand dollars to start off with.
Or they're biased and the nicer.
Or they can buy something nicer.
This is also really why it's important to choose your class president for advice. Because they have to make these decisions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. And to send me the minutes. Okay, nine point one oh, the agreement with final forms. This is software for our student office. So it'll help our student services and our EMIS departments. In addition, I was really happy with this because we're using final forms in athletics also. So this will just be easier for our parents to, to have that same kind of familiar, familiarity. Easy for you to say. Let's see if I can get this one right. Nine point one one, agreement with Saint Aloysius.
Aloysius.
Aloysius. For a student to attend. Nine point one oh, approval of then announced certificates. There was just one for today. And nine point one three, advertising contact, uh, contract, which will be effective from November seventh until November of twenty forty.
Yeah. I think this is important because this is sharing our good news.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yes.
And if you get this one by Watson Way, I'd like to pursue that to the, if there's a, that one, I think, wonderful place.
And that's all I have for finance.
No, I want to stay here on that. Mayor conversation. Like that motion to adjourn?
And it is. Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Baller?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Rieb?
Yes.